We don't always know exactly where and how things flood. You guys have had it in your basement, so you guys know where it goes. You guys can get some insights that we may not be able to get by having consultants come and look at sort of a, you know, thousand foot. So we're really looking to get ideas that you have on how to mitigate flooding that we will then bring back to the consultants. Say, here's some ideas that residents have. They may say, that's great, that's a great one that worked. Or, oh, good idea, but here's a different way you could do it. Or, good idea, but we can't do that, it's way, way, way too expensive. Or we'd never be able to permit it. But at least we can get the ideas on the table, at least we can explore them. And that's the whole point of why we're trying to have this public meeting. We're going to have a series of meetings because we want you guys to follow along with the project. Part of it, these are town taxpayer dollars, so they're going to pay for this for some, to a large degree, or bonding, hopefully some grants. But, you know, this is, this is going to be something that we're going to be looking to add resilience across all of Fairfield, riverine, underpass, downtown, and coastal. So it's a total town plan. And David Murphy, who I will introduce right now, is working with us on this as one of our consultants, and he will be walking us through a presentation, and then we're going to open it up for Q and A. If everyone can also make sure to sign in, and if you do sign in, check to see, I have, we have a flood and erosion control newsletter, and my intent is to be able to send you guys updates when we have new things, new ideas, things that, you know, you guys are going to be interested in. If, you know, we get permitted for something, we'll let you know that that's, that project's gone forward. A lot of people in this river are saying, when is, when are we ever going to get detention basins? Will we be able to say, hey, we got the permit, it's able to go? So if you'd like to have those updates, put your name on there and check it. Rather not, if you, a lot of people up there, you know, too much mail in their inboxes, that's fine too. But we're happy to send out the updates.
Would you ask if they could hear you while you're holding it?
So Morel, and who is the other person on the Zoom? Can you hear me if I'm way over here? Krista, can you hear me if I?
I can hear you. Yeah, it's totally fine.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
So I will, I'll clip it on me.
And then I will just advance.
Advance from here, that's, yeah.
You want to do that instead? Okay.
All right, so folks in the room, we have some, some people who are online in the Zoom, and we're recording this meeting. So if you, if you say something in the room, it may be picked up depending on whether we pass you this microphone or not. So just be aware of the fact that we're recording the meeting. I'm David Murphy from Resilient Land and Water. We're a consultant helping out to get this planning process started. We are not the consultant that'll be working on the plan over the next 12 months. And we can talk about that later if it, if it seems like it needs discussion. There's snacks in the back that I brought, so please have a banana, have a clementine, have a cookie, have some water, or take it with you afterwards. I know this is a weird time of the day, people may not have eaten lunch. So feel free to help yourself, and while we're speaking, you can get up and do that as well. Okay, so we have, I think, I feel like it's a pretty concise presentation, but we had some feedback that it ran a little long, so we condensed some of the slides. So at the last meeting, about 10 days ago, I said the material would be the same. And it is the same, but we put some, some slides together to make it shorter. So we'll go through the objectives of this process. We'll recognize the flooding challenge, you know, what are the challenges exactly that are, that we're recognizing in the realm of flood and erosion? We're going to go through, maybe sort of like a speed dating of what's happened in the past, what studies have been done, what's been constructed, because there's some success stories here in town. We'll talk about the schedule for the planning process for this master plan. We'll remind you what the outcomes are, and I'll tell you what your homework is. There's really not a lot of homework, but we'll, we'll touch on that. And then we'll end with an open discussion. And we're going to use this strange easel, wrought iron easel, and we'll write down comments on this, so they can all be recorded and passed on to the consultant. Okay, so why conduct more planning? Oh. Oh, it's Bill.
David, how are you?
Good, how are you? You're being recorded, so. Wait, actually, here.
Take this and just hold on to it for a second.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, I know everyone here, so, almost, but, so, thank you Becky and Dick for pushing us through this process and getting to this point. You know, one thing I've learned, I get a lot of emails about solutions, you know, that we should look at. And so for flood and erosion, putting berms in, you know, using certain devices. And I, I don't, I'm not competent, I'm certainly not confident in recommending any sorts of solutions and, you know, I, so I'm not very responsible of, on the, to say I'm not confident in recommending solutions. And I'm not confident in taking anyone's recommendations unless this is what you do for a living. So what I found is just, this is one of the more complicated topics that I deal with day to day. And I've learned that, that, that water works in ways, that moves in ways that not always predictable, and so many variables involved that they have to be modeled. They have to be modeled by experts, and even when they, when, hopefully David would admit that as, as an expert in Connecticut, it's not always even predictable, even if you have all of the, the degrees and, you know, the information that you could possibly have at hand. So that's why for various projects, first of all, you know, they've taken a long time. While we haven't just, you know, moved forward with, with solutions, possible solutions unless they've been thoroughly vetted. And I know it's led to a lot of frustration, acknowledge it, but I'm not sure what the alternative is other than do what Becky and Dick have asked us to do, which is come with the process, create a master plan, and bring in experts to assess not just the risks in a certain area, but how contiguous, you know, how a budding areas might affect the risk in a certain area. And as complicated as it is, we need, you know, very qualified people looking at it. So we brought together a little working group that included David Murphy as sort of our owner's rep on an RFP to sort of go out and look for firms that could look at a townwide master plan, allocated a lot of money towards this. And it's frustrated a lot of people because of the amount of time it's taken. But ultimately, better to take time and do it right than to do something silly. I don't know if everyone knows the story, but there was a lot of push to build a berm in front of the old Penfield. And a lot of residents for that, and I wasn't in office at the time. But the story is that the town acquiesced, build a berm, and it could have been one of the, actually toppling. And because the water went, breached the berm, actually created more scour, and was part of the reasons why. Oh my God, Keith, come on, was that you? Sherwood Forest. Are you about to charge me? Charge! But, um, so, so that, that story in itself is, was a, you know, one of my greatest warnings is that, so when I, I hope that we can come, this process, now that we've brought on board through a process that included Mr. Murphy and Becky Bunnell and others, engineers, where we, we've hired Weston and Sampson through an RFP process and, and race coastal engineering as they look at the town. Hopefully, we get some feedback, some ideas that will lead to, well, projects, not, you know, a billion dollar the code up the rivers, but something that we can actually do, multiple, multiple projects that we can actually implement over time that will help alleviate the flooding. Part of the process is to ask residents for their feedback to be incorporated into the planning process, and that's why you're here, and I really appreciate it. And again, Dick and Becky Bunnell, thank you so much for pushing this along.
I think a couple of folks came in in the last couple of minutes. I'm going to go back only one slide to the, to the list of what we're doing. So again, recap for if you were sitting here from minutes ago. Objectives, recognizing the challenge, we'll go through some of the past efforts and some of the successes, talk about the schedule, outcomes, next steps, and then end with an open discussion, and we'll take comments on the, on the flip chart. Okay, so question many of you may have, why conduct more planning? And oftentimes in the planning field, seems like we're not getting anywhere, but there really is a method to the madness. So a great part of the town is subject to flooding and erosion risks, whether it's riverine or coastal or stormwater. And so knowing that that, that area is an important part of the town, as the whole town is, it's time to put everything together and put together one comprehensive flood and erosion resiliency master plan. That can be used to inform everything that comes afterwards, your capital improvement plan, your next hazard mitigation plan, set you up for grants. Some of the things that have happened already have started to do that, but it's time to weave it all together. So some of the key questions to answer, oh, so what are the previous flood studies that have been done? And what, what went well, what didn't go well, and how can we improve on that? And then if nothing is done from this point forward, what's going to happen? What's going to be the cost of that? Characterizing that and getting it into this plan, I think, is a really important part of it. So that's the planning objectives for the next few months. But for this meeting, we want to collect your thoughts and ideas, and make sure you understand that your input is, even though it might not seem like it, if you've been involved before, right now is the key time, because everything that happens next is after today. Everything before today is going to be woven into what happens next. So you're sitting at this pivotal point. Again, it doesn't always seem like that, progress is slow, but it's a really important time to be involved, so glad you're here. So we're just going to go through and recognize the flood challenges. Of course, that photograph provided by the town from downtown area. So what kinds of flooding occur in Fairfield? So in no particular order, but as, as we stepped on the list, you'll see I'm combining them a little bit. So flooding along rivers, Rooster River, Mill River, Sasko Brook, and their tributaries. So this is high flows that sort of jump the bank can cause erosion as well. Coastal flooding, such as during nor'easters or tropical storms. Sometimes stormwater systems are overwhelmed, that happens in the downtown area, so that causes flooding. And that is one of the reasons that the underpass is flooded. You could have a combination of riverine and coastal, for example, Rooster River becomes Ash Creek. So where that switch occurs, flooding could be happening from both upstream and coastal influences at the same time. You could have sunny day flooding during high tides. Certainly, this is something that the town has experienced in a few areas. Combination of poor drainage and high tides at the same time, so the drainage is already overwhelmed, but maybe the outlet is submerged, so water can't flow out as freely. And then other combinations, and again, I mentioned the underpasses. So a couple of the underpasses are primarily stormwater related flooding, but a couple of them also have some coastal influence. The stormwater system is discharged to places that would be tidally influenced. So there's some interesting combinations going on. In short, all kinds of flooding occur in Fairfield. You didn't skip any, Fairfield did its homework, studied for the test and said, it's a joke, guys, sorry. It's, it's, it's good that it isn't as life threatening as it could be, but that is something that we have to always think about, and that's why it's also important to do this work. Just some quick definitions, hazard mitigation, we might not use these, but just to get them on the table, actions that are undertaken to reduce losses from flooding. So again, that word mitigation, if you stay attached to carbon, that's reducing emissions. But when it's attached to hazard, that's a loss reduction. Climate adaptation is taking that and looking forward. Resiliency is preparing for, withstanding, recovering from, and adapting from something like a flood disaster. And I think we only use this term a couple of times, special flood hazard area. That's the flood plain that regulations are important in. So you can live in a flood plain, that's not a special flood hazard area, that can occur, but that's the regulatory term. So did you know that there are more than 2,000 flood insurance policies in force in the town? And there are about 150 properties that have made multiple claims to their rep lost properties. Really important thing is, if you own your home without a mortgage, you don't have to have flood insurance. I am certain that there are flood losses occurring that are not being picked up by these numbers, right? These are just the numbers when, when insurance is in force, and so we know about them. But maybe some of you have had flood losses that weren't insured, and so you're not on this graph, you're not on these numbers. But that said, the numbers are already bad enough, right? So a third of all losses in Fairfield from any natural hazard, more than a third are flood related. So, you know, we don't want, if we added in everything else that was not insured, these numbers would explode, and it's already, it's already enough, right? We have to know the cost to not do anything going forward. So we believe that precipitation events are becoming more severe, more intense, and so that's causing some flash flooding. I remember when the flash flood warning was invented about 10 years ago, it wasn't used much. And now I feel like I see a flash flood warning at least once a year somewhere in the state. We've got this planning figure for sea level rise, which will certainly make the sunny day flooding more of a nuisance. Coastal storms, jury's out, are they becoming more frequent? Or is the damage becoming worse, which is really more important than whether they're becoming more frequent? And that cost to clean up is what's increasing every year. So we hear from towns that we work with all the time, Public Works is telling us, we just don't have a chance to even recover, and then there's a new one. So that's a cost that all of us end up paying, right? So we want to know what the impacts are if we don't do anything. What are those annual losses, whether insured or not insured? And then what are the impacts if we, if we, if we do something about it versus not do something about it? What can be permitted by, by deep and by the federal agencies? You know, what's, what's feasible from a permitting standpoint? These are all things to uncover in this master plan. So again, we've said already, situation, we need comprehensive solutions identified over the last decade, and then carried forward, the ones that are most cost effective, and will have the most bang for the buck. But also that will reduce the ongoing dry down of expenditures and sort of lead to situations that are not tolerable. So what's urgent, what should we focus on first, et cetera? So the goals, develop a new prioritized list of flood mitigation approaches with the cost for permanent solutions. That means elevating a house or temporary, that could mean putting in a barrier that you deploy right before the storm, and then you have to go take it down. So both kinds of solutions are on the table. And then work with the boards and commissions and departments to incorporate what's important from this plan into the capital improvement plan. And then ensure that the town can access grants going forward. Lot of uncertainty in grants in the grants world right now. I personally believe the FEMA grants are here to stay. There are entire states that, that exist because of FEMA, not us. So we can't just jettison those programs, and the town will be competitive if this plan is done. So again, we're aiming for the middle. You already have a capital improvement plan, you update it as needed, you've got a hazard mitigation plan, you've had one for 20 years. And so this new plan is going to populate those two documents going forward, because they're, these are updated continuously. This doesn't need to be, but it's pivotal in making sure that these two have the projects listed that you want to accomplish. All right, so we're going to, how's the pace? Too fast, too slow? Okay. So we're going to go through some of the previous efforts, and, and we got some good feedback that we spent a lot of time on this, and it was not the best use of time. So we've combined some of the slides, just to cut a few of them out. Really quickly, a long time ago, not really a long time ago, but in the 60s, there was a short area plan, which helped set the stage for a lot of work that was done. I don't know if you know this, if you're a Connecticut resident, I'm sure you, a native, you know, we built a lot of flood control structures in the 50s and 60s, right? We don't really do that anymore, but back in the day, we did a lot of that, and it reduced a lot of damage. But there are also some early studies in the Rooster River from 1990 and about 10 years later, which recommended a variety of things, bridge replacements, channel improvements, sediment removal, that sort of thing. So just really want to honor what's happened in the past before resiliency kind of became a buzzword. You'll also notice at this point in time, there's kind of a rudimentary timeline at the top of the slides. And so there's a little green icon, and it'll just move from left to right to show you the pace of, of studies. So the town's first hazard mitigation plan was developed in, maybe 2005. I had the privilege of working on it when Laura Pooley was here. We walked down to Fairfield Beach Road, took a look around. So that, that first edition of the town's hazard mitigation plan also had actions about riverine floods. There was a, a whole section about a tributary to the Mill River that was in that first plan. And this plan has been updated every five years, and it is the main vehicle, funding vehicle for FEMA grants. So what happened in 2011, 2012, of course, as you know, we kind of got a good reminder that hurricanes do come around. So the, the flooding that occurred during Irene and Sandy was, was tragic. But what it did was it spurred, a big shot on the arm for funding, like you hear is happening in other parts of the country, it's going to happen in North Carolina, right? They're going to have 10 years of planning starting now. But we needed that funding to advance a lot of work. And so as tragic as it was, there were some benefits. And so around the same time, the Flood and Erosion Control Board, the predecessor to the FERB, thought we should put together a comprehensive plan to look at flood mitigation in the coastal flood area. So you've probably seen this graphic, it's the one, it's sort of infamous for having all these segments that would be flood protection in an idealized situation that that could be paid for. That plan kind of is, is the precursor to the plan that we're starting now. But this new addition will have a lot more about the Rooster River and Mill River and, and the downtown stormwater flooding. Wanted to just touch on, as mentioned already, Penfield. So there were some early plans that, around 2014, 2015, again, Hurricane Sandy got a lot of this, pushed it along, the momentum was there. So you've probably seen, seen some of this in the past, and we all know the outcome. But really important just to say that it was an important step in the, in the process. Not everything that any one town has done has worked out the way that everybody wanted it to work out. And so it's important to acknowledge the planning that's been done that may not have gone the way that everybody wanted it to go. We also had some folks in the background, like the Army Corps of Engineer, who were doing some work looking at flood risk reduction. What happens when the Army Corps works on something these days? We sort of say, thank you, give us what you got, and kind of roll our eyes, and we, we hope that it's going to be helpful. And again, you know, we take what's useful out of these plans. All right, so a little bit of a jump, and with the Zoom, I realize the fatal flaw, you can't see the year, but I think we're up to 2017. Couple of things were done in, in, in quick succession. So there was some funding for Hurricane Sandy to look at historic and cultural resources, because they're really hard to make resilient, you can't just flood proof a historic structure. Sometimes you can move it, it can be hard to do that. That same year, the town finished the Rooster, sorry, the Riverside Drive Ash Creek flood resilience concepts, which was how to look at reducing the storm surge that was coming from Ash Creek, which is essentially the same storm surge that comes from Lion and Sound. But it was just, just to focus on that one segment. So that's a concept that was produced, you can see it's kind of like a, a depiction of an elevated berm around the marine basin, up into the open space properties. So those were completed. Around the same time, there also was the 10-town plan, the Regional Framework for Coastal Resilience. That plan was just about living shorelines in 10 towns. So what did Fairfield get, get out of that? There was a concept for a dune ridge for the part of the beach that is south of Penfield, like going out to Shoal Point. That's a concept at the lower left. And then that was also the year that I believe the town finished its engineered beach study. So the engineered beach study is to make sure if there's beach erosion and it's reimbursed by FEMA, you have a plan for how that would be used. Still in that same timeframe, 2017, 2018, the downtown green infrastructure plan was finished. That's obviously not been built, that's on the post road, that's like a what-if picture on the lower left. So the goal was to look for green infrastructure methods to reduce flooding. The South Benson Pumping Station design was completed around that time, or an earlier version of the design, not final design. And the cost figure attached to that, of course, was, you know, cost prohibitive to, to remove storm surge waters that collect north of Jennings Beach. But that's still something that is desired at some point in time, I believe. Then there was additional work by the Army Corps of Engineers, we sort of already took a pot shot at them. We know that they've got some work in the background, and what they did was try to take a look at some of those segments. Here's the, here's, that blue segment is from the Riverside Drive Ash Creek study. And then there's some other things that they looked at. The red dots mean they didn't look at a berm or a wall, they looked at elevating buildings. So information that's helpful, and we can pull into the master plan. All right, so a lot of that was coastally focused because it was funds from Hurricane Sandy. But we got a good reminder, September 2018, that our rivers also flood. And we knew it already, but we got a really good reminder. So what happened after that was some work along the Rooster River corridor and in the watershed. So places to build detention systems to detain water. And if the idea is if you're holding it in one place, that's not somebody's yard. If you're holding it in a golf course or a park, something that's already open space, then less water is trying to funnel down the channel downstream. There was also an update to that previous study that looked at the Lower Rooster River, and it kind of took another look at the bridges and the crossings and, and some of the channel constrictions. It was time to update that. And really good news is after, so now we've been looking at, this green icon has moved from, you know, 2011, 2012 to 2021, but now some things are constructed. So the flood protection system around the wastewater treatment plant, which will reduce flooding of that facility, that's a critical facility that can't be flooded. I know sometimes people say, why does it matter if a wastewater plant's flooded? It's dealing with water, but believe me, you don't want water and electrical controls. You just don't, it's, it's not a good situation. So really important project that was constructed. Some of the downtown green infrastructure plan was actually implemented. Some of it was on private property, so it'll take some more time. But some detention was placed under Sherman Green, I believe. And then some permeable pavement has been tried out in the parking, parking lot for the railroad station with some combinations of success, possibly not complete success, but not a lot you can do there. It's challenging, well-used parking lot, it's always busy. And then there was additional coastal flood modeling that was done really in the past, I think, year and a half, just to kind of get a handle on, on where, where the town was, what its thinking was relative to some of the shoreline areas. And then the underpass study was completed by the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, CIRCA. And this one focused on the four underpasses that flood the most, which you can sort of see here on this map. It's not a great contrast, but North Pine Creek, Mill Plain, North Benson, Round Hill. And I think what was helpful about this study was that it helped to demonstrate that the exact causes of flooding were a little bit different in each underpass. So it's hard to just generalize the cause when there's small differences in those. And there were some good ideas that came up that hadn't come up before. One of the ideas from town staff was make the underpasses wider, which doesn't really seem like it's going to change the flooding. But it, it gives you a greater pool area, it gives you some space for different kinds of vehicles to get through at different water levels. So the study took all ideas. And then I think this is the last slide we have and what's been done already. But the Plan of Conservation and Development sets up this master plan. So if you look at the, and it's not final yet, but if you look at the draft, it calls for a strong positive statement about building flood resilience. It, it describes areas that are hands-off, basically, we don't want flooding in these areas, and we also don't want flooding on these roads. It talks about resilient hubs, resilient corridors. And it's meant to be a positive statement for the town about what to do going forward. And one of the actions in the P O C D is to finish this plan. You can see everything's kind of ready to be woven together. So, so now what? That's a lot, that's a lot of information that seems like it's, some of it seems like a long time ago, some of it seems very recent. So I'm turning over the planning process to Weston and Sampson and Race Coastal Engineers. Pretty soon, they'll be, this is the schedule they'll be working with. They've got five primary tasks, a reassessment of the vulnerabilities and the risks. They're going to put together some visual products to help communicate what those are. So that's this task, the visualizations, to communicate, to communicate risks. I can't draw nice pictures, they can, so that'll be really helpful. You'll start to see that in the late spring and early summer. Some concept designs they'll put together at the same time, and develop a long-term vision, the plan document. And the whole thing should be wrapping up in December, January. And again, we looked at the slide already earlier, but this is the goal, is to make sure that this new plan, the thing in the middle. By the way, how do you like the branding? People, just, some people don't care, I think it's nice to have colors that match the town website. Okay, all right, thank you. Just say, it looks good, David. So again, the goal is to put some of the information from the plan, prioritized list in the capital improvement plan. Some of it will go back to the hazard mitigation plan, which won't be updated until 2028 or so. So that's the next steps for the consultant and for the town, the next steps are for you. You don't have, not a lot of homework I'm leaving you with. But, oh, I should have changed this bullet, this was for the last group, this is today, it's already repeating. Provide your contact information, there were sign-in sheets. We're going to write down information that you want to give us tonight to get it on the record. Whatever you say, if I write it down, I type it up later on, and it's going to be in my notes forever. So just, it's a promise and a threat. Public information sessions and workshops will be occurring this spring and summer, not with me, with Weston and Sampson and Race Coastal Engineering. And then in the fall, you'll have a chance to look at the draft plan. And this is our last slide, I'm going to leave it up, open discussion topics. And I think what we'll do is, was there a second one of these? Where do we put it as a question? Or pass it around?
Or pass it around?
It's right there.
Okay.
So you, hopefully we got your case when we can end because I will pass them on. But you'll be right on David. We're really looking for a good point for you guys to share your ideas. What types of things do you want us to look at as we progress this plan? And as I said before, we can't promise that we're going to go with your ideas, but we, since the consultant, they'll evaluate them. They're the experts. They'll be able to tell us, yes, you can put that and it's a great idea, which I thought about. We'll be able to say, we'll be off, there's no way Connecticut need more than anything near that. But that's what, at least we'll be able to get your ideas on the table. And I think, you know, you guys have experienced the fight. Come into your basements, into your houses. So you guys know where the water comes from and you can help us with at least ideas to explore. Yes.
Well, I'm just curious, how something, I should know this, that we hardly know
So actually, pieces is
We can just pass this.
Conservation actually has a list of where the flooding happens. We brought in, and they came up with 10 different areas around town.
They knock, like David said, like there are people without flood insurance who may not have filed a claim. So when you say loss, you mean people have filed a claim?
Yeah, those are all insured and filed a claim. But there are plenty of people outside who don't have to buy flood insurance.
Right. And they should be providing, like they should be letting the town know when they flood, but not everyone does.
But we can have your newsletter help us with that.
Right, exactly. So, you know, in terms of ideas, but not just ideas, we want to know.
We want to, what we want to do is, so part of the process, so I need to walk us through this if you have questions, is we have four days where consultants are actually going to drive around town to look at all the areas where it floods. So one of the things we want to do
Do you want to be the facilitator? Because we'll probably have to. So you would call on people in order that you want.
Start with that, but if we could get, you know, your properties, your intersections. I had 40 feet of water in my basement. We'll make sure that that also gets onto the map. But I think we need to do some outreach to make sure that those people who did get flooded, tell us. But again, Entergy does have a good list and Conservation does as well. But it's not complete. I'm sure there are people who are not on that list.
So we, just real quick, we're going to have a facilitator help me out because I'm a bad facilitator. So thank you. But now you're in charge. Okay.
Good comment. Back in the eighties, a town off the coast, Madison or Old Lime or somewhere up there, passed an ordinance that the town would assess the value of all of the waterfront properties on the sound. And that was a price that they set. And they said, you can live there as long as you want, but when you move out, when you sell, we'll give you that price and then the house will be eliminated. In other words, retreating from the sound. And of course, the public opinion was, you know, that's crazy and don't do that. Back then, the, the houses along the Fairfield Shore, a lot of them were cottages. And now there are mansions with the footprint of a cottage. The, the price would be astronomical. However, the infrastructure that's there will also be destroyed. The water, the sewage, the electric, the gas. And all of that cannot be replaced. During, I think it was the, the no-name storm of 92, there was a, one of the multifamily houses was on fire. And the fire department couldn't get to it because the flood was so high. So it, it's a big price tag, but maybe 10, 15 years from now, that it may turn out to be a bargain, the way the house prices are going up. It is probably possible to protect the sewage treatment plant, but certainly you can't protect all of the houses that are down there.
So we do have, one part of the analysis will be actually to do an analysis of what the value of all of the properties are in the floodplain. And we actually have right now an intern going around and evaluating all the houses that have been raised. So we have a complete listing of all the houses that have actually been raised because those are less likely to have serious damage. Not that we won't get some damage. Somebody else?
Let's ask you just a quick question. How do we know we are going, we have flood insurance, so it was on.
So I have one on the list. Let me, let me, I have not actually sat down with Conservation that that was one of the things we're going to have to do is, is get that, start to get that map. So why don't you assume you're not, but you probably are, but assume you're not and give us your addresses and, and give us a little description of what exactly happened. I got 40 feet of water in my basement or whatever.
So I was curious, was that, are you on the beach? Was that?
No, we're on Rooster River.
You probably know this, but NFIP sends you the list every year, just with FEMA. And it lists all the recurring events that occurred at the property. NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, FEMA, sends you notice that you and it tells you actually how much was playing.
But that's actually, sorry, I'm at the beach. I got a letter. I didn't have any floods. I didn't show a claim, but I thought I might have. I probably had $7,000 worth of costs. But I said, I'm going to play that because it wasn't worth it. So I got flooded.
That letter only indicates what's on record. So in, in many cases down at the beach where I am, you know, people sustained several hundred thousand dollars worth of actual damage. But unfortunately FEMA, when they sent their, their insurance people through, you know, like in my case, you know, I had several hundred thousand dollars worth of damage and they said I had 40,000. So the, the letter comes in from NFIP, it says $40,000 when I had hundreds of thousands. So it's, unfortunately, that it's not accurate. But, but it is there, yeah.
This gentleman in the front row who just spoke about, you know, buying, retreating. Do we have your name? Okay. So not, not at that scale, much smaller scale. Oh, sorry, with your mask on, I, yeah, I, I didn't know, I didn't see who you were. But you're, you're incognito with the mask. But, um, so we do, at a much smaller scale, our conservation director looks for opportunities to acquire land that comes up in, in floodplains or in conservation areas. But it is opportunistic. It is not going out and being as aggressive as, as you would like and as, as I would like. We, I think it's a great idea if we could to have, you know, a fund, establish a fund to do, to, to buy, if they're not very expensive, if they're sort of not built up homes in, in, in high-risk areas. We tried to do something this, over the, took, you know, over the last year, year and a half, and tried to get FEMA funding to do it. And the FEMA funding took so long to, to acquire the property. The property owner ended up losing patience and selling the property. But, so if we're going to do it from my experience, this one, one piece of experience, if we're going to do something that's not opportunistically acquired through like a foreclosure or a gift or something like that, we'd have to fund it because those funds are just impossible to get through FEMA. They take too long.
The people who were here last week. It's a Carpe Diem moment for Fairfield. West Cog had a outreach effort for its repetitive loss properties the other night. Roughly 20, 25 people showed up. It was virtual. That was their second effort. Dave outlined the repetitive loss properties, 149 RL and 20 XRO severe repetitive loss. And I'm not seeing anything being done by Fairfield. In fact, I'm having trouble identifying your emergency management director. Who would be the person who would? It doesn't make town, it really doesn't. This is, this, it doesn't. It all requires. They don't have to. You can talk to
He knows her worst.
Well, the application period is open until May 5th. It's Carpe Diem. If you're a repetitive loss property, you ought to get an application. And it's just a sitting and throwing it back to the town. The town doesn't have to have a significant role. Meeting we had in Stanford, Stanford provided the location. What we had the other night was virtual. And it doesn't have to be a burden on the town. This is very specific. Really directed at the homeowners who are repetitive loss. And it's right now, it's Carpe Diem for everyone in Connecticut.
Chat individually with him if you want. You give me your name or, or his, his name so that he has a better, you have better understanding.
Fairfield's not a West Cog town, just in case anybody's wondering, the Cogs.
All right, so another comment or questions?
Yes.
So I titled my speech as Rooster River.
Did I write this all down?
Uh, no. In fact, I have a, a jump drive with slides, a few slides. So I, I call it the Rooster River, or I should say the Rooster Open Storm Drain. And the reason why I call it that, and I live on Lindbrook Road. Oh, I'm sorry. And the reason why I call it that is because all you have to do is walk from the, where the Rooster River is on Brooklong, to walk along the river to King's Highway. And what you will find is there are, now we're on the border between Fairfield and Bridgeport. So as you could see in this picture, and again, I have a slide if you want to, you could pass it around. Bridge, both Bridgeport and Fairfield use the Rooster River to dump the overflow of small drains. And that is where our biggest flood issue came from. So in mitigation of, of the flood, you know, the flood issues, one of the plans is that they're going to build holding areas in, by the, the golf course, one by Constance Hill, right? And those are new projects. And we keep hearing about the, well, it's the Army Corps of Engineers that are holding up progress, et cetera. Recently, this year, I think it was, we had, we got the permits to dredge Southport Harbor, right? Two years ago, Westport had got permits from the Army Corps of Engineers to dredge Sogatuck River. So dredging seems to be, so, so my thoughts are, why don't we dredge the river where it can hold more or it's, and, and take away? Which is, it's already being used as an open drain. So shouldn't it be easier to dredge what we're already using to drain the, the water away than starting new projects here and there and still waiting for permits years later?
Excellent idea. Now let me give you a quick update that Bill Hurley gave us on that very topic. We, he has basically put out an RFP within like four to six weeks to be able to have a surveyor look at the height of the river sediment versus a 1960s. Potentially there could be a foot or two of dredging on the river. So what we would be able to do is dredge that at the bottom today versus the 60s. We could activate down to the level of the 60s, potentially opening up a whole lot of new storm water. And this is going to happen between, right now, the area he's looking at is Route 59 to Route 1, which is Lindbrook Avenue. And he said that we have existing grant funds to do this excavation. So that is an active project. I don't know if that's exactly the area we're talking about, but at least we're going to be dredging a piece of the river in that section 59 to 1. And that's an active project that'll be going out for RFP within four weeks.
And, and just to add to that, because I know when you talk about dredging, everybody, everyone worries about, well, what are you going to do with the sediment that you removed? Well, because of the, the river overflowing and rising to the levels, it also causes erosion on, on our berms. So as far as I'm concerned, you could take some of that and you could put, build up my berm even higher. And then you don't have to worry about where you're going to dump the rest of it. Yeah. So, and, and by the way, so in 2018, I had seven feet of water in my basement. So we lost everything. We, we've lived in Fairfield for 40 years. For the first 30 years, when we had a mortgage and you had to have flood insurance, we never used it. We stopped, after we had the mortgage, was paid off. Yeah, and then we got hit twice. Yes. That was only six feet of water, but we lost even our electrical panel, everything.
We're going to come up to the side of the room. Well, thank you.
Hi, Lori Riley. Yeah, I agree with your dredging, not being an expert in any of this. I thought, well, that's a simple idea that I had thought of. Well, why don't we just dredge, right? Because it run, right in front of my house. But I have a question, so thank you very much. I have a question about this project that's already in the works. You said 59 down to Lindbrook.
59, in the 59 to Route 1 area. I don't have the exact area. I can get it from Bill Hurley and send that out to you. But that's the area that they're putting the RFP to do the survey.
It would be like, I would just think, like from east and say, down. Okay, because that's, that's my area. So I'm at 160 Fairfield Woods Road, corner of Stratfield and Fairfield Woods. And there's a, the river is, I don't even know, five, six feet across, right in front. And that's, has flood. It was 18 and 21. So I was just curious if you knew where that 59 started. So it sounds like
But I'm happy to try to get it for you and he can, he can tell you exactly.
Yeah.
I was able to make it today, but he did give me the information.
Uh huh. Well, that's good news and I like that project. Thank you.
Sit in all meetings and I'll really pull you on. It didn't, it knocks for years. And, and you know, Rooster River have come up several times. And I can just say that the other words that come up with, within that discussion is easements, environmental, and what, what I've heard is, you know, if you're going to do a dredging project, you have to get a lot of easements and sometimes people won't give them. So there's complications around that. It would be, it sounds like there, and, and then you have to get approval, you know.
To talk to your neighbors.
Yeah, there, there will be, yeah, yeah.
We've been through that. They got six signatures on our street alone and we were told that wasn't enough. But I just want to say this too. Because we're on the border of Bridgeport, and if you look at some of those big drains. Don't even go from the Bridgeport side. Where is Bridgeport in all of this easement?
I believe there are funds, I could check on this, to do that again. But again, we need easements to get across people's property to be able to get those big trees out and, and things that are going to impede the flow. So if you can help us by talking to your neighbors.
Then we got to go, this one's going to
Just one more thing about that. So on the Bridgeport side is a street. You don't need any easements to, okay, so.
Yeah. Dredging, if, if you're cleaning out fallen trees and, and brush and stuff that impede the flow, that, that is good. Dredging the bottom just makes the river deeper. The water is going to seek its own level. But, I mean, Southport Harbor.
But it allows you to hold more water in it.
But the water is already there.
It's a short buffer.
It's not, none of these are 100% solutions. And I think we need to be very clear that detention basin, dredging, getting rid of the things that impede the water, all these things will help. There's no magic there. There's no, I mean, when these rain bonds come, it's crazy. There is so much water that, you know, the only real solution is to elevate your house on, which is very expensive. A lot of people aren't going to spend the money nor, nor should they. So we're going to do something. A lot of people aren't going to spend the money nor, nor should they. So we're, we're going to do some of these other solutions, which will help. They'll help a lot, but they won't be a hundred percent.
Yeah, one, one thing that, that will help, uh, uh, at the, uh, the catch basins are the swirl chambers that will, that will take, um, uh, sediment and, uh, and, uh, the plastic and all of that stuff that tends to clog up the river.
And I think we should review the maintenance plans to do this.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they have to be cleaned, uh, and you have to have the space, uh, that are willing to put them in. There, there's one, uh, on Morehouse Highway, uh, uh, right adjacent to Lake Mohegan. Uh, and there are some other places where they would help.
Lady right back here.
Hello, my name is Noemi. I live on Stratfield Road. Uh, I found this very interesting graphic on Fairfield's website that shows that when one inch of rain falls on a forest of, of wetland, so there's resulting of the seven hundred and fifty gallons of runoff. While when that same amount of rain falls on a hard surface, there is twenty-seven thousand gallons of runoff. The difference is gigantic. And while I see a lot of the storm drain into the Rooster River and increasing the volume of water reaching the river. I wonder if there is not things that can be done before it reaches the river. And I saw a lot of projects or survey being done on Stratfield Road or on Villa or even the intersection of Stratfield and, uh, Woods, uh, being redone. And yet it's all hard infrastructure. It's just adding more asphalt. No bioswale, no rain garden. And it seems a very, um, narrow way of thinking of infrastructure. While if there is the money to redo those streets and redo those intersections and nice cross soft infrastructure costs less and has way more benefit than.
Thank you. We have for that. Um, we are looking at bioswales, um, and rain gardens. Um, one of the things, New Haven, for example, has two hundred and twenty bioswales and they use that very effectively for their flooding. Um, there is a cost to that because you have to maintain them, um, you have to clean them on a regular basis. But what we'll do is we'll have a adopt a bioswale and people can help do it. So we will be, our consultant will be looking at that. Um, we also have the detention basins and I have an update on that. But Bill has a.
I was just going to say that, um, that we are laying the groundwork for more of that to be done. So we created a traffic authority that's no longer in the police commission. It is a, um, group of professional, you know, where there's, um, the enforcement element, of course, but also town planning and engineering. And the town planning and engineering piece of it is, is going to be doing more roundabouts and, and, and looking at doing bioswales. And, you know, every time we bump out a curb, can we put one in? And so that we have sort of the groundwork to make that happen faster. And we'll be getting our, our tree, uh, um, our forestry, um, warden, tree warden, uh, involved in all of that as well and conservation. Thank you.
Army Corps of Engineer, um, a, a lot of you might be wondering what's going on with these detention basins that will be soft surface that will allow the water to percolate through and get it off of those hard surfaces. Um, so for, we've been waiting for a year and a half for Army Corps of Engineers to give us their permit approval. They finally gave us what's called a, they, they completed their review and they're about to do what's called a project authorization, which means we can proceed. So Tungus Hill and, and two sections of Fairchild Wheeler are the next, uh, detention basins we'll be working on. We were also able to, um, basically reduce what would have been a million dollars in fees. We reduced that by eighty percent. So that's good. This was to do environmental studies and things. So we'll, we'll be basically looking at Tungus Hill, I believe, um, in the summertime is when we hope to be starting that. Fairchild Wheeler, because it is a golf course and it is shared with Bridgeport, will probably be after the golf season, so probably late fall. We'll, we'll be able to start that. Um, Owen Fish is also on the list. Um, but that's still in the design phase because what we found when we looked at it and really got into it is only, the water table's only eighteen inches. So we have to really understand where is the detention capability, how, what's the best way to do that? Um, but those are all being looked at as well, so that we are finally, we, we'd been bottlenecked by Army Corps not being able to give us their page. Finally, that's over. So.
Great. We have a comment.
No, it, it was more of a, you know, it's kind of a question. When you're looking at, you know, flood and erosion, we're hearing, I'm hearing a lot of people saying that their basements flood and, you know, and a lot of that's really anecdotal stuff because you're looking at any particular property and you don't know what the source is. And, you know, when I'm looking at flooding and I'm, I'm here with Lake Hills, you know, and, uh, you know, flooding and overtopping is a big concern of me with the dam. But I have specific measurements by which I'm planning for. You know, you know, the hundred year flood, you know, the, you know, the probable mean failure point, things, things like that. And the storms that we're getting here are not normal. And you're never going to be able to, you know, plan for, you know, a, a Newtown event or a Lake Lor event. You know, where Essex or any, or any of these, these isolated events. But do we, do we know what, what our threshold is? Where do we stop? I mean, you know, if we get a, a surge tide, you, you can pile sand up in front of the beach and it's still coming over.
So we've got, we have a proposal right now, a planning proposal for the beach area, the coastal, which is, uh, elevation twelve. We're going to be doing a similar thing for the riverine area where we try to understand what level of flow we would plan for. Um, so I don't know that we have a hundred percent solidified that, but Weston Sampson will be sort of putting that, uh, stake in the ground on that.
But are we, are we trying to keep the water out of the basements or just protect infrastructure?
Honestly, the main objective is infrastructure because we want safety. We want to be able to get influences to people. We want to, you know, if there's a, an issue, we want to be able to get the fire truck to you. Um, so we do want, you know, from that standpoint, um, I would encourage everyone who is getting flooding, you probably already have move your electrical upstairs or out of the flood area. I mean, uh, because as you said, these rainbombs are going to keep happening. Um, I'd like to say that we can eliminate our flooding, but it, it's not realistic. And frankly, I don't think taxpayers would want to do that. It's just, it would be too expensive to do that.
Thank you. Um, so there have been many studies, uh, throughout the years, uh, uh, down at the beach area regarding, you know, Penfield area. Um, and I just want to make everyone aware, if you're not already, uh, there, there are a lot of gross misperceptions uh, surrounding coastal flooding around the Penfield area. Uh, and it's been, uh, it's just been echoed in some of the studies that we've, that we've paid for. And unfortunately, uh, the, uh, the information that they've provided in the studies is erroneous. Um, uh, I thank you to, uh, to the Flood and Erosion Board. Uh, we've had a conversation about this. Uh, I've lived down there for forty years and, and I've, I've stayed in my house during all the storms and I see where the water comes from. Um, and I've invited them and they've taken me up on the offer, uh, and I extend the invitation to the, uh, to the engineers and the, the companies that are going to be conducting these surveys to do the same. Um, because, uh, we've spent an awful lot of money on trying to protect a building from flooding when it's the entire coastline that floods. So I'm looking forward to, to seeing the, the plans and discussing with them, uh, because these misconceptions, misconceptions have, have cost us a lot of money and a lot of aggravation throughout the course of years. And there may or may not be things that, that we can actually do to, to prevent flooding in the area. And I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware that what, what we've learned to date and what we've heard people complain about is not necessarily accurate.
Yeah. Thank you. And we will take you up on that. Um, if, if I could also give some context for coastal flooding, um, because I think that's an important context. Um, the Army Corps of Engineers in two thousand and nineteen did an analysis of what it would take to eliminate coastal flooding up to the five hundred year storm. And it was basically eight foot, six foot walls down at the beach, none of which we would ever want as, as taxpayers. We wouldn't want to pay for it because it was a five hundred and forty-seven million dollars of which we would have paid a third. It, and, yeah. So, so I think what we're trying to do is put a more realistic, uh, goalpost in the sand, for, at least for the coastal, which is we're going to protect against sort of the nor'easters, some of the, you know, hopefully maybe up to even the sandy level, but we're not going to protect against a cat two or a cat three. We're just not. And I think we, we don't want to because it's our taxpayer dollars that would be doing that and we'd have to put huge walls up, which we don't want. So what we are looking at is can we fill all the, some of those gaps because the water comes in at all the different places along the beach? And you have to fill all of those because if you fill one, it's going to come in around the other way. So, yeah, so can we do that up to a certain level that makes sense, makes sense financially? But it's, but I think we need to then recognize it's not going to protect against every single storm. As long as we're all, you know, holding hands and on the same page, it, it's a smart thing to do. So that's what we'll be looking at, um, the elevation twelve.
Another comment or questions?
I'll come to you, bud.
Or I can talk up loud, so.
Terrific. Thank you. Um, so, so part of, of, uh, great commentary and the, uh, what I think we need to look at too is to know, uh, specifically, um, where the water comes from, right? So not only who's been hurt, but where actually the water came from, so we can may potentially mitigate that. And so what I've offered to do is to have the, uh, and, and really as a start, uh, anybody who's gotten water wants to tell me about where that is, I'm happy to look at it as a member of the board. Um, but also the associations in town that are on the either Rooster River, the Mill Plain, uh, Mill River or, or Sasko Creek. Who would, I'd, I'd love to come over and, and spend some time with you because we found when we did this, the water's coming from different places than we thought it was. And there may be some areas that we can, uh, we can learn from that are not modeling, but are the actual, this is where the water's coming from. Um, that's one. Two, um, I think there's, we, we talked about ingress and egress, right? So egress is how do you get the water out from, and, and I'm talking, talking about Rooster River. How do you get the water out of the Rooster River? That starts at Ash Creek. If you don't start at Ash Creek and everything going forward, all you're going to do is get a lot more water into Lindbrook because it's not going to get out. It's going to, it's going to stay in your area. And we don't want to do that. We don't want to hurt anybody getting water to them that they weren't getting before. Um, I'd ask that all these suggestions that are, are coming, that you give us feedback on, you know, yeah, great idea. The, the experts say, what are you, out of your mind, right? That's crazy. We're not going to do that. And you could do it in a single document. I don't think you need to give, you know, individual feedback, but a document said, these are the things that were brought up at these meetings. And here's what our consultant said were, uh, came from that. The, um, so, so part of that, the walk the Rooster River. I think we need to walk from, you know, as, as a, as people are interested somehow putting together from the Ash Creek all the way up to fifty-nine in various stages. I know we're going to have, uh, the, the, the people in the, in, in the cars, the consultants are going to come in the cars and do that for one day, I believe, on, for the, no, but for the Rooster River. I, okay, whatever that, but there's going to, th- those are going to be really, uh, even still, you go in a car, it's a lot different than if you're actually in the river. Okay, fair, fair. Um, and, and the last is, so I'm really interested in, in this is, these are intermittent problems and we're making, trying to make permanent solutions as opposed to other things we could do right now that are temporary solutions, barriers and other things like that. Um, one of the things that's been asked about that is, well, okay, how are we going to get the, you know, who's going to do that? You want to put a barrier up for, in the, in the hours before a storm comes? Or it's sometimes in the microcells in the minutes before they come. How do you do that? And so I've really been thinking about that. We have volunteer firemen, volunteer policemen. We could have volunteer flood protection people. And I think you'd find a lot of people in town would be willing to put some time and effort into, uh, and, and commitment into doing that, right? Uh, towns have volunteer ambulance services where people are on call and they, and they do that kind of thing. So having a volunteer for the temporary structures, uh, is something I think might be, uh, we could explore. Thank you.
Oh, and if you're, if you're, I know we did, said, well, if you're involved in any of the rivers, um, I'd love to get your, uh, your name and contact information, uh, uh, to help with that.
And we'll be putting this big master map together where it was.
Maybe there was a comment before this gentleman. Did you have a comment to him? Okay.
I just have a, a, he mentioned something that's a great idea, but, um, or, um, the volunteer idea, and maybe it could be like a, a neighborhood association or an action committee. Cause we, you know, with the volunteer police and the volunteer fire, you know, we don't want to put them in harm's way, actually. Even volunteer fire, they're usually, you know, um, they, they go and help out, but they don't go into the fire. And there'd be, um, some concern about if there's a microcell burst, we're not going to send people out into, um, a storm. But if it's people that are right there and can get there quickly, that's, that's a great idea. Um, so I, I had another point, which is. Yeah, yeah. There are entire communities who have volunteers who go into the fires in Fairfield. No, not, no, not in Fairfield, not in Fairfield. You're, you're, you're right. Hey, I, he goes into the river and pulls stuff out. There are, there are designs that could be done with that. There, there, there might be, but and the amount of, it's like, I, I, you know, if there's an action committee in, in a neighborhood and then we can, we'd have to find places to store it. It's, it's an interesting concept, then you could act. Because I can say, from experience, limited experience during these big storms, once the, the storm comes and it's not expected. And, um, I know our, you know, our current, uh, COO, um, you know, called around, was trying to get people out and probably to your neighborhood. Hey, can we put these things up? And they're like, like. Don't have the people that we can get to the site, so we a group of people like do exercises, you know, in advance and probably have to live in, in the neighborhood, you know, to get there quickly. Just so you know. You'll do it. Attention or the, the, the barrier systems that I presented, I was asked presented to the, to the board, um, are able to be put up. A hundred and twenty feet would be put up in ten minutes. The Navajo Indians, Na- Native Americans, uh, in one hour uh, stopped the flood flow of a river using, diverted this river using these and was done in an hour. And also you don't have to actually have them up before because you can put them up as the water is flowing. So there's a whole reasons why that actually might work.
And we will be exploring it.
You have another question back here.
So just to comments, first of all, when it, if you're, anybody's interested in a walking tour of the Rooster River, meet me at my house and bring your boots and we'll walk along the river and I'll show you where s- some of the water comes from. Second of all, I've been to a, a whole bunch of meetings since, uh, the floods. And sometimes it seems like there's an insinuation that we in the flooded areas are looking for pie in the sky, totally dry basements. We know we, we live in a flood zone. We know we're in a valley, so we're going to get some flooding a- as issues. I just want you to know, we are realistic. It would be nice if we had two feet of water rather than eight feet. We all have sump pumps, but the sump pumps drain into our yards, which are underwater, so it just comes right back in. So, so I, I just want you to know, we are realistic in our thoughts. We're not looking for totally dry. But we would like to have some control as to at least how high our, our, you know, basements, uh, get flooded. So we don't have to replace everything, uh, or move our electrical panel to, uh, the, the top of the telephone pole. And yes, the water does come from all different areas, but I can tell you, I, in my, in the floods, I could sit in my house and watch the water bubbling out of the storm drains because they're, they're overflowing from the storm drains and there are no place to runoff to because the, the river is flooded as well. Anyway, that's my story.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And, and if you don't have it now, but think of it later, um, send it to, uh, go onto the online, the flood control board, have a comment section. You can send the comments. We will take all the comments. So if you think of something two hours from now, oh, I wish I'd said. Uh, please, we're looking for input. We'll evaluate the input with the experts. We will, we, we've found, we, we always find good ideas when we listen to our constituents, our residents who actually live there. We always find some good ideas, so we want to hear your ideas.
We took these slides on the, uh, website.
We will, we will post this on our flood and erosion. Yes.
I just want to make the comment from. Uh, just want to make the comment, from some experience, we had a meeting regarding a proposed detention, um, uh, pond off of, you know, the Villa, one fifty Villa Avenue. And, um, our engineering, um, people put up a video that, um, someone had sent them. I find that very powerful. If you, I mean, for the people that live in a flood area, if you see, um, you know, uh, if there's a flood and you can actually show on a, on video where the water's coming from, it's like a permanent record that we can pull out every time. Um, that is powerful, you know, for, for me, not knowing how these structures work, someone telling me you can erect a wall and put interlocking gates at every driveway and things like that. That's not all useful for me. Maybe it's, but what's really useful is saying, this is where the water came from and I can prove it to you with, with, with something, a video I took on my phone.
Okay. So, um, we're going to say thank you for coming. Um, if you do have other ideas, again, feed them in. Um, if you wrote things down on your sticky notes, um, please bring them up. We will capture them. And again, we're going to have our consultant evaluate them. Um, and they'll tell us whether they're good ideas, whether there, there's a kernel in there, but if you did it this way, we could do it, we could do this. Um, because you guys are the ones who are, have the hands-on experience. So thank you for coming.